All right, Ms. Skelton, I'll, when you get the recording going, I'll call us to order. All right, we're gonna call this, uh, special call meeting for April 7th, 2025 to order. Where, where is, I don't have the, okay. All right, so, Ms. Skelton, would you give us a roll call?
Mr. George?
Here.
Ms. Wetzel?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mayor Teague?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And myself, you have our forum.
All right. All right, item, uh, special business, item one is discussion regarding Phoenix Industries' parking lot, where'd my glasses go? Uh, about the entire situations around the parking lot repairing the resurfaced, so, uh, I'll open that up to the council, however you guys want to proceed with that. We, you were given some information at the last meeting, uh, you spoke with Mr. Harrison, and we called this meeting for this purpose. And Mr. Harrison is here to speak, if you guys would like him to speak. Yes?
I have a, I've read this three times, and I'm not, I don't pretend to, um, say that I understand everything I've read, but, Mr. Smith, in your opinion, in your legal opinion, it, I, it feels like we're even, but I don't know, contractually, where are we with regard to the $250,000 as a grant, it was paid, it was used to pay for equipment, and now we're back to the parking lot thing, so I'm either missing something, I don't know what I'm missing, so that's why I'm asking your legal opinion.
Well, I think your, your thoughts are correct about it being even because the Schedule A does say a parking lot, and it does also say a fence, security fence, and the money was turned over, best I could tell, to Phoenix Innovations to do those things, and to the best of my knowledge, it was converted to something not on either schedule, and, so, the value was received based upon the intent, the contract of the amount of incentives, so, I would say yes, that, at the end of the day, I think it was fulfilled. Just in my opinion.
Okay, and so the reason we, the reason the equipment was done, it was because there would not have to be environmental studies and other tripping hazards that would come along with building a parking lot as opposed to buying equipment that, uh, Phoenix needed to start operations, did I, and I, this is to the council, did I read that right? Is that how y'all are reading it?
I mean, that's how I read it, like, I've, and... Is it Mr., it's Mr. Harrison, right?
Yes, Mr. Harrison, if you'd like to approach the, the podium, please state your name, even though we've said it multiple times.
If I'm, i- if, if my reading, like Mr. Gray's, uh, could be incorrect, but if, if, if I was going through and looking at this correctly, we had everything in place for us to do the parking lot, but because there would be additional things that had to be done before the parking lot could be done, that Phoenix opted to go with an equipment instead of the parking lot. Am, am I under, am I understanding that correctly?
That's certainly what it looks like, but it's not necessarily what occurred. And so, I'm Nathan Harrison, you asked me to-
Thank you for identifying yourself, sir.
Not, not a problem at all, and I'm president of Phoenix Innovations, uh, I'm board president of the Arkansas Valley Soccer Association, and board president of the Chamber Commerce in Russellville. And so, during the initial courting of the city of Russellville with Phoenix Innovations to buy the building, that's when the schedule was developed. And Mr. Smith, you were part of that as well, correct, with Paul Harville and some of the other groups?
Correct.
Okay, and so what we did is, we, uh, asked for those things as part of the purchase agreement to buy the building in Russellville.
Okay, what were those things exactly?
Uh, Schedule A, uh, on, yeah, so if you'll go to Resolution 1961, which I don't think you guys were provided with that last time, do y'all have a copy of Resolution 1961?
That, that was given to, I think it should've been given last time.
Oh, God, it was just like right before-
Yeah, yeah, it was right before you, but it was given to you, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, and on Schedule A, we had existing parking lot repaired and resurfaced, and, because it was in fairly rough shape, we filled in with some of our own gravel and things at that time, and we've made it work until then. Cleaned up trash and debris in the area directly behind the building, which Paul Harville and the Arkansas Tech Engineering Department did. Uh, they came in, they cleaned out everything that was necessary, uh, on that Schedule A repair. They also, uh, we, we asked for security fencing around perimeter of the property boundaries, because we do keep a lot of high-value stainless steel, and if y'all have watched the tariffs lately, uh, steel is doing nothing but going up, and so I'm glad that we have our security fence, because we're not an area that is frequently patrolled, it is a private drive down there as well, so we wanted a way to secure, uh, some of our higher, uh, some of our higher materials that we needed to buy, so that was the reason for the security fence. LED lighting upgrades throughout the manufacturing space of the building, which did not end up costing the city of Russellville a dime, we were able to go with Keatley Patterson and a group out of Morelton, and they were able to use, uh, state grants to upgrade the entire building with LED lights without a single dime, uh, passed on to the city. So, that was a cost that ended up, uh, being saved to the city, and then relocate the existing railcars on the rail spur behind the building, which DNR Railroad did, and then DNR quit claimed any deed to a spur that they had behind the building, uh, which actually turned out to be owned by the building, because Thompson Industries actually built the spurs back when Dalton King Packaging and Thompson Industries, uh, was operating in the Stella Jones manufacturing space. So, all of that was done, and we agreed that we would apply for a grant from the state of Arkansas, manufacturing-related grant for job creation for $240,000, which, yes, was originally discussed for a parking lot and security fence. So, we went through the steps with AEDC, we made the proper grant concessions on our end, we agreed to, uh, to spend a certain amount of money on the building and upgrades, we also agreed to, uh, hire a certain, uh, minimum number of employees in the city of Russellville, which we have now exceeded, and we hired employee, and if I'm correct, it's 65 last week, so we've created 65 new jobs in the River Valley, uh, and most of them are highly skilled workers. And so, our, uh, payroll exceeds $4 million a year now, and so, uh, hopefully the majority of that being spent back in the River Valley and the Russellville area on taxes. So, uh, the state came back to us, um, so Bentley Story, who was a project manager for the state, who then transferred it on to Jack Pillow, and told us that a construction project at that site was not feasible for the state due to project management concerns, and they said that they would like for us to apply that to something else like equipment. So, the grant was not specifically tied, it was a request that we made to the city, hey, we're going to try and go after this money, and if we get this money, and the state will let us use it for a parking lot and fence, we will. The state came back and said no, and that's in the email communication that you can see from Bentley Story. Do y'all have the email communication? Okay, so the email communication, so yes, absolutely, we talked about using it. We were trying to say, it's, we were, we're thrilled to have the Dalton King Packaging building, and we are thrilled that the city of Russellville agreed to sell it to us. We're trying to hold up our end of the bargain, we have upgraded and have expanded onto that building, we're doing everything we can to ensure that we stay a steady, uh, manufacturing force in the River Valley. And so, what we did is, when they came back and said, we, that you do not need to use it due to project management concerns, I went back to Mayor Harris and Paul Harville, because Paul was the one who negotiated the entire deal upfront, made it very clear to them that the state, and Richard had those emails, and you can see where I forwarded them to Mayor Harris the day that I got them. Matter of fact, he may have even been copied on the emails and said, hey, we no longer have access to this money for security fence and parking lot, and we had discussions surrounding that staying on at the seller's schedule, which it eventually did through Resolution 1961, signed on the 12th day of October, 2021. So, that schedule was never changed, updated, or anything like that, because we had already got the information that we were going to do our very best to try and get that money for that, but when the state came back and said, no, you can't use it for a parking lot or a security fence, we had to shift gears, which is immediately when I informed Mayor Harris and Paul Harville. Because that's a material change in what we had discussed. And to update y'all on where we are with that, we did get a couple of bids back, and it's actually even less money than we had thought. Uh, the bids came back at 155,000 and 161,000 to repair and resurface the parking lot, so it's not even at the 200,000 that we had assumed, or the 240,000 that we thought it would be, and my partner, Luke Miller, and I have already agreed, we're not interested in recovering any money on the security fence, we did that last year, it's already installed, the gates are there, we're not gonna put that on the city. We would just like to request the money to have our parking lot repaired and resurfaced as part of the original economic agreement in, in Resolution 1961.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm still lost, but anybody that knows me, that's not unusual. So, um, wa- was there something besides the 250 or $40,000 grant? Because that was supposed to be for parking lot and security fence, correct?
We, we asked for it, or we went to the state, it wasn't designated to the state. You go to the state and you ask for a jobs grant, and you say it's for improvements to your building, okay? Now, that doesn't mean improvements to the parking lot, security fence, equipment, it doesn't mean any of that. They give you a blanket, $240,000, but then they need receipts to back up what that grant was for. So, you submit your receipts to the state and for the city so that the pass-through grant could come directly to us. We didn't have to use it on equipment, um, or anything else like that, but the state did have to oversee any construction or special projects with a project manager, and that's why they came back and said, hey, we don't want to assign a project manager to this, that money does not need to be used for anything with construction, or else we'll have to come back out there, you need to choose something else.
Okay, I understand that, I think. So, you got the grant, you bought equipment, 240,000 or 260,000 dollars worth of equipment, right?
It was actually quite a bit more than that, we just applied, we just applied the money, we spent, we spent over $3 million in equipment.
As far as this grant goes, the money there was approximately 240 to 260,000 dollars, correct?
240.
Okay. So, is anybody gonna help me here? Because I'm, I'm not following how, if we, if you got in-kind money, I mean, if the money got in-kind services, meaning, or not services, but equipment in this case, I'm just not tracking the parking lot and security fence part, so...
Did ADEC tell you in regards to the grant for the parking lot and the security fence, that that could not be used for those items? Or did they tell you that there would be like some additional steps that would have to be done, like in environmental studies, so on and so forth?
So, when I first questioned that, when Bentley Story said, we couldn't use it for that, it seemed that way, but then in his email, it says, we are not providing a grant for parking lot or security fence, we are providing a grant for equipment. It's what this, I believe that's verbatim what the, what the email says from Bentley Story.
But they did say you can use it for equipment?
That is correct. Which is when I informed Paul and the mayor that we were not going to be able to get our parking lot accomplished, and that it needed to stay on the seller improvement list for the resolution.
Let me ask a question, we have a, a legal document, this 1961, that says we will provide updated parking as the city of Russellville, right? And security fence, I guess. Um, it's within the Schedule A or Section A of the document, right?
Yes, that's a 2021 document.
Right, but we haven't changed it, have we? We haven't come back and amended the document?
It was never amended after the 2022 emails that Mr. Harrison is, they're, the emails are after the signed document.
Right.
And the city never went back and amended that document.
Because it never went to the council to be amended.
Yes, so...
The mayor on his own cannot, does not have the authority to bind a contract, because the original contract was brought to the council. These amendments were never accepted by the council, and therefore are not binding on the council legally. And I guess the other point, Mr. Gray, to get to your original question, say you give it the money, what are you gonna characterize the 240,000 you gave in November of 2022? Because if this is the economic development incentive in the contract contemplated, then the 240,000 that's already been out the door, either we get to ask for it back, because either it's a gift, because nowhere in that document does it say, or any of the evidence before, the two letters that the alliance said, never contemplated the city getting, or tried to get a grant for equipment. If you call, if you give me more money, or give the company more money, you call it the economic development, then what is the $240,000?
Well, the $240,000 was done by the state of Arkansas.
Correct, and it came to the city. And the city cut you a check.
As a pass-through.
It's a pass-through, but we still gave it to you, and we're on the hook. It becomes a gift if it's not for economic development purposes.
Is it not notated in the past, the specific transaction? There would have been an appropriation that said, this is what this money is for, I mean, we have to document that, right, it was passed through for grant from AEDC. I, I'm more concerned with the fact that we are obligated to do a thing that we said we would do. I mean, I wasn't on the council then, I mean, but that doesn't mean, I mean, I am now, so as a city council person, are we obligated to fulfill this contract agreement we had with someone as the city? Like, we, we said we would do X. I'm sorry, it hasn't been done yet, like, we're here to have to look at this thing that hasn't been done. Either we amend it, or we do the thing.
So, I just wanna read something here real quick, I believe this is from Bentley Story, Wednesday, March 9th, 2022, uh, to you, Mr. Harrison, as well as, uh, Jack Pillow, and I guess he's at the Economic Development Commission as well. So, talking to our grants team, it may be easier for our grants to go towards a piece of equipment versus real estate improvements. When using CDBG funds for real estate improvements, which would be the resurfacing of the parking lot and the security fence, it triggers additional federal requirements, such as environmental review and Davis Bacon privilege wa, uh, prevailing wage. It's much easier for both parties if we use this money for equipment. Do you have a piece of equipment we could put towards the 260, uh, that, we could put the, the $260,000 towards, and in turn, free up the company's funds for the fence and parking lot? And then, you responded, yeah, you, you do have some equipment, and I see several different things where you're saying you have stuff that's, you know, right at that number, and so on and so forth. Now, I know in going back, and it doesn't have a page number that I can easily tell folks to go to, but I know in going back and looking at the document that was provided to the council at the time, uh, when we were first approached about Phoenix Innovation buying that, that building from us, it was specifically mentioned that you have a grant pending with the ADEC, or Arkansas Economic Development Commission, for resurfacing of the parking lot and for the security fences. So, that was in the proposal to the city, was that you have, already have grant funding pending to do those things that were on the city's list. And then, over here, on the 9th of March, you were told that, well, it would just be easier to use that funds for equipment, because you don't have the environmental review and the Davis Bacon prevailing wage, blah, blah, blah. So, when you came to the city, you proposed using the ADEEC grant for that, the repaving of the, of the parking lot and the building of the fence. I think what the question Mr. Gray was asking, and I think I'm gonna, and I'm gonna follow it up here, is it, you affirmatively chose to use those grant funds for something else?
So, fast forward to your same email chain, Wednesday, April the 6th, 2022, at 9:11 PM. Bentley Story to Nate Harrison, Gene Noble, and Jack Pillow. Nate, we are providing a grant for equipment purchases, because I struggled for a month to find out if we were gonna be able to use this money for a parking lot or a fence, and for a month, I fought back, because I didn't want to have to go back to Richard and Paul and ask them to leave that on the seller list. So, a month later, he says, we are providing a grant for equipment purchase, y'all all have this email? It's on the front side of that chain. We are providing a grant for equipment purchases, the initial request for assistance was for the fence and parking lot, which I tried to do to take off the city's back. Okay, and that says, the initial request for assistance was for the fence and parking lot improvements. However, using CDBG funds for real property projects creates much more red tape enclosing environmental studies, additional timing, et cetera. Using CDBG funds for equipment is much easier on all parties involved and can be accessed much faster. So, we are committing, which is a finalized term, 240,000 for equipment in lieu of the fence and parking lot work, which should free up company funds, which are not restricted.
Okay, so when you came to the city, part of your proposal to the city in getting this was the Economic Development Commission grant that would pay for the parking lot and the fence as part of your presentation to the city? It was going to be on our list of things to do, but you were securing a grant to go ahead and do that item?
I actually don't think that I did that, I think Paul Harville did that.
Okay, well, you were, you were a party to it.
There was a lot, yes, there were several people that were, but that was assuming we were going to be able to use those funds for said purposes.
Yeah.
And then, after I found out we couldn't, on this April the 6th email, okay, I sent a commitment letter to Bentley on April 7th, because we finalized that, is, that day is when I called Paul and Richard both, and said, hey, they're not going to pay for the parking lot, we need to keep that on the seller repair list.
Okay, that's my question, so there was never an amendment made to Schedule A after that discussion, that we have?
No.
Right, okay, so... I look at these contracts a lot.
You kept the money, you know, and used it.
We, we used the money, yes, sir.
Yes, for something other than the Schedule A.
That's correct.
And you never came back to the council, amended the contract, saying, letting the council know that that money would be amended, that would be used for something else, not contemplated?
Okay, is that burden on me? Or is that burden on the city?
Did you come to the council or not? It's the city's money.
Which one was?
The 240,000 that you got from the state, it passed through the city to you.
Sure, that they agreed to use.
And you represented to the council back then it was going for a fence and a parking lot.
Okay.
And then, we passed your Resolution 1961.
Yes.
And six months later, you bought equipment with it.
Yes, sir.
And there's no amendment to the contract.
I understand.
And, and you never said, oh, by the way, that 240,000 I got, I'm using it for something else?
Uh, was it forwarded email to the mayor? It's adequate communication, or no?
The, did the, the mayor, though, didn't approve the first contract, did he?
I'm sorry?
Did the mayor approve the installment contract? The one to buy the property and put Schedule A? The council did, right?
And the mayor, they're both signature, uh, the mayor's signature's on the resolution.
Right, but did it not authorize the mayor to sign it? The council authorized the mayor to sign it.
Yes, sir.
The council has authority over all finances.
Okay.
So, the, you got approval from the council the first time, but then the second time, when you were changing it, you just told the mayor, and you thought you got approval?
I, I wasn't asking him for approval, I was just saying that it needed to stay on the resident, on the seller's Schedule A.
You just, you, as a party to the contract, changed the terms, six months later, unilaterally.
Where on the contract does it say? I didn't change anything.
Where on the contract does it say that you should buy equipment with the 240,000?
It, it's not in here either.
Exactly.
Mr. Smith, Resolution 2044, are you able to look that up? It, it's where, in June of 22, the 14th of June of 22, I just see this, where the, um, authorizing the mayor, city clerk, treasurer to apply for a community development broad grant to aid economic development with the city and other purposes. Um, and it does mention, uh, let me see here. Made available the city council, plastic, I'm trying to see if it meant, what it mentions here, but that, that's when the grant was actually applied for. It doesn't say what it's, am I missing something there? Your, uh, funds will be made available, aid prevention, something like, um, hearing questions. Yeah, I'm looking at that on, um, 2044 is what it, do you have that, sir? But, yeah, I'm not seeing any, I'm not seeing what that's, that that's being-
It has to do with, we have certain policies that provide lower living, families, some are blind.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a policy, it has nothing, no bearing.
Okay, that's where the, that was where the council approved to sign up for that grant, okay. Okay, I was just looking at that. Trying to figure out that that's, because that was after, that was after this conversation, and that's when the council did approve to apply for that grant. Is there any? That's only one page.
So, Mr. Smith, you're saying that once the money, once the state grant money was spent on equipment, that, I guess in a perfect world, Phoenix would've had to come back and get council approval for any other further expenditures, or is that, am I tracking that right?
In a perfect world, yes, that, if there was gonna be modification in the contract, it has to be modified both, both parties. I think it's clear from the proposals that were given to the council that this grant money was supposed to go to two things.
Is there any way to see if there's any backup documentation of this?
Hey, Nate, when did this close? When did you buy the building?
Uh, so, we bought the building on, that would've been October the 12th, 2021, is when we agreed to buy the building.
Okay.
Did you say 12/21, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, in June of '22 is when the city, Resolution 2044, applied for the grant funds?
Uh, yes, and we did not get the check until November the 2nd of 2022, per email from Robin Johnson to myself and Richard Harris. And I want the council to know, we're trying to be a great partner to the city, I'm not up here trying to get something for nothing, and so, I don't want it to sound like that either, because we've been doing nothing but working diligently towards all of the promises that we made to the city of Russellville since we purchased the property.
I completely understand that, and I appreciate all that you've done out there. I completely understand that, and I appreciate all that you've done out there. We're just, we're the custodian of the taxpayers' money and this is, um, we're caught here. I, it's, it's gonna be hard for me to approp, you know, try to appropriate money that it feels like, looks like we have already procured through a grant as the agreement. Um, that it was in, you know, put for one thing instead of the original purpose.
And to be clear, Mr. Smith, can you answer this as well? Did it cost the city any money other than administrative to pass the money through to me? Because the money originated from the state of Arkansas, through the office in Hot Springs, through Russellville. So it didn't cost the city any money. This, this is not two hundred and forty thousand dollars of Russellville's money. Is that correct?
It is a pass-through, but we still have the obligation.
Was it the city of Russellville's money, or did it come through you from a different organization?
It became the city's money when we got it.
To be allocated to Phoenix Innovations.
Yes, for the purpose.
Because we went through the state and we went through the process.
Right, for the purpose on Schedule A, which you diverted to something else without telling the council. I mean, you don't agree that Paul Harville stood up there and said that that those grants would go for the fence and the parking lot?
I don't believe I was in that meeting, but I'm sure Paul said it because we discussed it on multiple occasions. If it could be applied for those things.
And they never told you no in any of these email chains that it could be used for that?
Uh, yes, they did. The one from Bentley Story, the one I just read.
Completely? Said no?
Sir?
Says no completely?
It says, so we are committing two hundred and forty thousand for equipment in lieu of, so in lieu of would be another term for no, is that correct? Or opposite or in exchange for?
It's an exchange.
Of the fence and parking lot work, says, we're providing a grant for equipment purchases.
Yeah, but go up two lines before that. It says, however, using C B D, C D B G funds for real property projects creates much more red tape, including environmental studies, additional timing X. It doesn't say you can't use it for that. Can you point anywhere in that chain that says you cannot use this money for a parking lot and fence?
Sure, so a reasonable reading of, so we are committing two hundred and forty thousand for equipment in lieu of, doesn't, what does that tell you if you're an average citizen?
Tells me that you're say, that basically you're swapping out the intent to purchase the equipment in exchange for using the fence and parking that you would pay for. You're swapping, but it's not occurring an additional obligation to the city. You're giving what the city sponsored you to get that money. And you're using it for something else in lieu of the fence and parking lot.
So do we need, do you need more time to look at this? I understand the, the first meeting, you, you were given information and then we called this special call meeting to do this and have a little bit more discussion.
I'm not saying I'm confused now, Mr. Mayor. I'm just saying, I'm just expressing my, I just don't. I'm just not thrilled with the whole situation.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how how we would get this information, okay, so, and, and bear with me just a minute, Mr. Bradley. Because, and I understand your frustration, but at the same token, you're saying that you're frustrating that you just got thrown into this. Unfortunately, the only way that we do these meetings is in a public opinion. We can't go behind the scenes and say, okay, have these private discussions. So it, this was the best of my knowledge of the way we could do this. We, we have this information presented to us. You have the ability to talk to Mr. Harrison and, and please don't, uh, I'm, I'm definitely not coming at you. But I'm just trying to figure out, how do we have these meetings to get this, assimilate this information out to everyone? If something, unfortunately, none of us were here, well, with the exception of Mr. Smith and maybe Miss, were you here, Miss, uh? Skelton, so, uh, the, uh, none of us were in, in these discussions and, um, so, uh, I, I don't know if we need to, do we need to come back more? I mean.
Mr. Mayor, if, if it came off like I was, like I was taking a dig at you, that's not.
Oh, no, I, I didn't. No, you did not take a dig at me. No, we're, we're good, Mr. Bradley. I just was trying to figure how we could do it.
I don't like the way that this was, that this had been handled.
So, um, so I just looked up in lieu, it means instead of.
Okay.
So I, I think it's very clear what in lieu means is instead of a parking lot, we got a, um, equipment, so.
Mr. Olson, you're behind me. I didn't see all of this.
So I was on the council back then.
Okay, I do apologize. I was pointing out that Mr. Keller and Mr. Olson were here. I do apologize.
Um, and my understanding back then was the seller improvements list was something we were gonna have to do. And we were applying for a grant to pay for it, and if the grant covered it, great. If it didn't, we were gonna have to pay for it. And that's, that's the way I've thought this through the whole time. It's where I stand now. It's where I'm gonna be. Because that was where I was back then when I approved it. And it's on the list now. Nothing's changed. Nothing was brought to us. We, we gotta do our part of the bargain, which is pay for it. That's just my two cents.
So Chris or, or Mr. Smith, there's nothing in here that said that one, I guess, took care of the other one, right? It was a, like you just said, if it happens right, because we never, without any kind of amendment to that, I have a hard time not honoring a contract, so.
Nate, I'll entertain a, we can entertain a motion of any sort at any point in time. Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Smith is, was the grant, approval of the grant intended to, to cover that expense and take that burden from the city if we could apply for and get that grant? And in your opinion, with the ultimate execution of that grant being in lieu of paying for equipment, does that not satisfy the city's obligation?
That's what I said at the onset for Mr. Gray's question. That it was written in a presentation to the council. The director of economic development said at a meeting on September seventh, twenty twenty-one, which you may go watch, that the grants were for the repaving of the parking lot, security fence. And he was even asked by, uh, Mr. Westcott, what happens when I get the grants? And the lights director at that time, not the one now, said, you don't have to pay a thing. Go watch it. And that's all I'll say about it, but the monetary value has always been two hundred and forty thousand dollars of, uh, grant money. You know, sure, he's made jobs, but we also, that was kind of requirement by the, by the contract. We also took a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar loss on the sale of this.
Actually, that wasn't what the listed price was of the building. We covered that in that very same meeting that you're referencing. After Paul Harville said that, before I got there, it was only fifty thousand dollars because you guys had adjusted the list price of the building.
No, we sold it for, we bought it for a hundred and fifty.
But that's not what it was listed for. My loss is not what you bought it for minus what I bought it for. Your loss is what it was listed for minus what I bought it for.
It's the city's loss.
Uh, but you're, you're now attributing more numbers to make our company look worse in this process. Guys.
No, I'm saying that basically the city has gone at great lengths uh, to give economic stimulus to make this work. It's all, I just pointed out the council, who most of them weren't here.
As someone who was here at that time, I'll say that when we were going through this process, you know, I was excited keeping you here, you know, uh, I know that, you know, in talking with, you know, Paul Harville and everyone coming in, talking about the project and learning about what it is that you guys do, which is still very neat, um, that one of the things that made this whole situation super attractive to, at least to me, and I believe the rest of the council at the time, was, okay, so here's a list of things that we as the city are going to do as part of the seller. But here's these things that are on our list, but we're not actually gonna have to do it because we're gonna go through and find other funds to be able to do this.
Yes, sir.
And so it was my understanding at the time that we went through this is that we executed the agreement with the understanding that we would be using these grant funds in order to, in order to, to cover that part of Section A that was the the parking lot and the fence. And then in June, when we have, and I haven't had a chance to listen to the whole meeting, but I know that in June of twenty-two, when we passed twenty forty-four, it was that economic development money that was to go to you guys to aid you in coming here as part of fulfilling our agreement as the seller was getting you these funds. Originally, the funds were gonna be for the parking lot. You guys chose through, for whatever reason, you guys decided to not go through the environmental studies and so on and so forth. And the guy at A D, uh, the Economic Development, Economic Development Commission said, hey, no, it's gonna be a lot easier if you just use these funds for equipment as opposed to the other. And so it was my understanding at the time, again, that this was all part of that. This was part of what we were doing to fulfill our obligation in selling that property and having you and, and your company stay here in our community. And so where I'm having, where I'm having the, the, I mean, the headache with, with, with this is going through is that I feel like the city has done what we were supposed to do. You know, we sold the building. It was for a loss, depending on how you look at it, it was, will depend on what the loss was for. You know, we sponsored the grant to the Economic Development Commission originally for the parking lot and the grant. And you guys decided you didn't want to go through the, the red tape that was involved. And, you know, by the, you know, even with the advice of the A D E C, they said, you know, we want to go ahead and we think you should just go ahead and go this easier route. And then we, as the city, came through and sponsored the application and got the pass-through and everything there. So I guess I'm trying to figure out where the city's falling short.
Sure, and this seller repair list, just for everyone's knowledge, was made well before the grant was ever applied for or that we even had knowledge of.
Well, in your, in your, and in this packet here, but in your presentation with Paul Harville and maybe he put it, I don't know, but I mean, in the packet that came to the council as far as the purchase of that building, it specifically mentions economic development grant that has been, that has been applied for that would cover the parking lot.
I can go back and check and check the application date, but I can tell you this was developed before we applied for it. However, I, I understand exactly, guys, we're talking about a matter of words here and that's okay. I understand, but when we didn't get, and, and it certainly feels like in these emails, we didn't get permission from the state to use it for a parking lot and fence. And when that occurred, I went back and I, and according to Mr. Smith, did not go through the proper channels, so.
It wasn't so much permission from the state, was it, that it was an option, right? That you could, you could use that for equipment instead of doing the stuff on Schedule A?
And so only what's in writing is legal, okay? These emails are legal documents. All the conversations behind it, though, are do not use it for a parking lot and fencing. Use it for equipment because the funds will be transferred much faster. We don't have to have a project man. And those were not expenses to me. Those were expenses to the city and the state. It wouldn't have cost me anything.
Okay, so this letter that specifically mentions the A E D C pending grants for resurfacing the parking lot and the security fence are from the Alliance for Economic Development.
Yeah, and, and I would lean towards Mr. Harrison there. I don't think that those grants were applied for at this point in time. I think there was, uh, communication there that was saying that those grants were applied for. Based on the knowledge of application, that I, I think, uh, that the, 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 the grant was not applied for at this point in time. So what you have is you got, you, you enter into a contract in December of twenty twenty-one, then you have all these emails that the council is not subject to all of these different emails. Uh, and then they didn't go back and, uh, did, there was not a, um, the powers that be did not go back and amend the contract when said emails were happening. And so you're, you're, it's kind of, but I, but like I say, I don't think that uh, the, the grants were applied for at that point in time.
No, and I've got no ill intent in this. We didn't sit around and say, oh, my gosh, they just switched it up. We're gonna get a free parking lot in two thousand and twenty-two. So that's not what I did. What we did is when they came back and told us that, I, if they would have said, use it for a parking lot and fence, I would have used it for a parking lot and fence. That is the integrity that I brought to this city. That is the integrity that I've upheld every position, servant or other, in this community with. And I question you to go find a single person who disagrees with that.
What, what was the, what's the dollar amount we're talking about?
Uh, so the, the lowest bid we've got is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to repair and resurface the parking lot with two inches of asphalt.
So a hundred and fifty-five, it seems like we're probably pretty split, something, whatever. What if we, I, I would, I don't know if I need to make a motion or whatever.
Wouldn't you entertain a motion at any point in time to get us moving?
I'd make a motion to pay for half of it and just split it. We, we messed up, you messed up, who knows? And let it, let it go. So I make a motion to pay for, uh, seventy-seven five, seventy-seven five.
I have a motion from Mr. or Councilman Olson to pay for half of the lowest bid for the repair and resurface of parking lot at Phoenix Industries.
I'll second for a discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion?
Do we have, I have other partners that I'd have to discuss this with. There doesn't have to be acceptance of this if it does pass. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, I, you're, you're, you're not entering into any contract.
Mr. Smith, I'd like your opinion on that.
This is just a formation of an offer after it's formalized by this council's vote, which your company has nothing to do with. You can neither accept it or reject it or counteroffer it.
Thank you.
Okay, so all these emails end around April of twenty twenty-two. Why is it now that we're talking about this?
Because we entered into expansion mode on our business. We actually added over fifteen thousand square feet to the building. We've hired over fifty-something employees since this point in time. We've operated a business at a very high rate of speed. We quadrupled our gross revenue last year. We're doing over twenty-three million dollars a year in gross revenue, creating tax benefits to the city. We didn't have time to redo our parking lot at that point. I've got gas parking in the grass, under trees, in the dirt. Uh, can we go pay for a parking lot? Absolutely. I'm just asking if it's still in the city council's review that we were owed this in the original economic development agreement through the resolution. Because what we're trying to do here is we're trying to lump the city of Russellville into the A D, A E D C grant. And yes, you sponsored us, but there is absolutely no language in this resolution that ties any of this to a grant. It's not in the seller schedule. It's not. You read this resolution a hundred times and find it for me.
But we also, it doesn't say we pay for equipment.
But it doesn't say.
And that's what we did.
But there's nothing on this two hundred and forty thousand, of that two hundred and forty thousand, has anything to do with this specific resolution.
Strictly effective, we didn't pay for what we said we were gonna pay for on Schedule A. It got used for something else.
Sure.
So we, I mean, your point, you can make that point, I can make that point, so.
Hold on, though, but it's not, Schedule A is not tied to a grant, not in this resolution?
Neither was the equipment.
Exactly.
But this was all done before the grant, correct?
Yes.
So like, you guys were, the seller, the city committed to fixing the parking lot before you even applied for a grant. Is that what we're saying? Because we're trying to make sure we're on the right page.
Yeah, this is a year and one month before we received a single check from the city.
So was anything on our contract on our end, because I wasn't here, pending that grant? I guess is what I'm trying to say.
The, the, the verbiage in the communication in the meetings was that from economic development, from Mr. Harville at the time, who's not here to defend himself, um, said that we, the, the council would get a, he would provide a grant for this. And so that, that's where, that's where the grant comes into play, the verbiage comes into play. So there's no, there's nothing in the actual seller's con, by seller contract that talks about a grant, but the, all, there was communication before and after talking about the grant, just try to clarify for people, uh, that are watching this.
Sure, which, which actually didn't come from me.
While we were having this conversation, Paul Harville said that there would either be a grant or the alliance would take care of it. So this isn't something that the city's going to have to, have to deal with, with putting it on the seller's schedule. And that was the way it was understood by the council at the time, was that, okay, so that's on there, but it's not something that we're going to actually ever have to use money for.
And so that's, that's the part that was not ever added to the agreement. Right.
It was, it was what was asserted by the then director of the Economic Development Alliance for the Valley.
Was this grant something that the city had to apply for, or could a company get this without the city's aid?
No, the city applied for it. And I, I don't, Mr. Harrison, I'm pretty sure I don't think a company could get it alone, if I'm not mistaken.
I had to have a sponsorship.
Yes, had to sponsor.
For the check to pass through. I applied, I did, I applied for the grant directly. Filled out every piece of paperwork. The city had no paperwork involvement in the grant.
Understood, but, but it's not something that you could have received without the city, correct?
Uh, no, the city had to act as to pass the organization for the money. Yes, sir. That's the type of grant that it was from economic development standpoint. Yes, sir.
So I've got a motion in a second. We're still in discussion, any, I've got a motion in a second. No more dis, any more discussion or no more discussion? Having a motion in a second on the floor for, to pay for half of the lowest bid on the parking lot for Phoenix Industries. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
No.
All right. I'll need a roll call. Ms. Kelton.
Can we do that? I have a question real quick. If I, after this vote, propose that we pay for all of it, is that, like, if this were to fail?
We have to vote again.
If there was a proposal to pay for all of it?
Or did she need? Do you want to modify the motion right now, or you can either modify the motion?
I need to ask to step out. My son and them are at the movies. I was supposed to, I'm supposed to pick them up tonight. I need to go call him, let him know I'm going to be a little late.
Okay, all right. Um, so Ms. Young, you can modify the motion at this point in time. You can say, I would like to modify this motion, uh, at this point in time, or you can allow this to, because I'm not sure, based on my hearing, if this is going to pass or fail. Uh, so is, is this a?
It can be modified after the roll call is called?
Yeah, we should finish this.
Yeah, so we, go ahead and do the, you want, you want to go ahead and do the roll call? Let's go ahead and do the roll call.
Mayor, I'm going to table this item until next Thursday.
Second.
Okay.
We have to finish the.
Do I?
Point of order.
We still, we still need to finish the roll call. Let's finish the roll call.
No, I checked with the parliamentarian.
So we don't have to, we can, we can move.
March to table takes precedence.
Okay. Have a motion in a second to table this. Any discussion on that?
I think this will give us some extra time to look more into some of the supporting documents, go back and.
All right. A motion in a second to table.
I agree. I'd, and to add that, I would like to watch the videos, um, from 21 and 22.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item will be tabled till Thursday.
And I'd invite everybody on the city council, including Gina, Mayor Teague, and Mr. Smith, to come down and visit our facility if you'd like to. I'll give you a great parking spot. Now, just, I really would. If you guys want to see the progress we've made and you want to see what we're actually discussing, please call down. I can set up a time. You guys can all come. I'll give you a tour, the same way I do the guys from Tyson Corporate, George is anywhere else. But if you guys want to see the spot and what we've done with it, I would love for you to come by.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Miller, for coming out tonight.
Mr. Mayor, could we get all those, the email chain, the original procurement?
You should have everything that I have copies of. You, it should have been emailed to you. You should, that's what I was going off in my, I was watching right here.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we have Resolution 1961 in our packet.
Okay, okay.
We've got references to it, like the schedule and that, but I don't know that we have the actual resolution.
Uh, yeah, we can get Resolution 1961.
Gina, would.
It was, okay, it was. Okay.
I don't have it.
Okay.
Gina, would you be able to give us?
Thank you, because I was looking for it. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Would you be able to give us a copy of the audio from the, the, uh, June 2022 Agenda Prep? Thank you.
And the, um, September 27th, 2021, where Mr. Westcott asked, that was clarifying questions.
Is the audio?
Did you say September 7th?
Is that why we need, okay.
I thought it was 27th, but I was, the one you were referring to, Mr. Smith?
It would be September 7th because it would be an Agenda Prep. It wouldn't be a 27th.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving on. Uh, where are we at? Where's my? We're going to be talking about discussion for presentations for individuals. We're going to, just for the sake of this, I'm going to go alphabetical so that I don't get anyone upset with me. Uh, so we're going to go, uh, Duffield, Howell, Miller, and Pistone. Is that correct? Alphabets? Yes, it is. Okay. Yeah, just making sure. So we are going to have four presentations on, uh, the Boulder Church and auxiliary building. So Mr. Luke Duffield, are you going to be the presenter or?
I would love to say if she can make it back from her office.
Oh, Ms. Bellagia? Okay, so we, okay, so, so then we would go to Mr. and Mrs. Howell. If you would come to the podium and please state your name and, uh, you, you can, you can.
My name is Stacy Howell, and this is my husband, David.
Condolences? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just.
First, I'd just like to say thank you guys for investing your time into the community. Um, I think sometimes a lot of people in the community that don't come watch a meeting or don't stay up to date on things, um, don't understand the time and the value that you guys put in, so. Um, so I just wanted to start by just letting you know who we are, um, because I feel like, um, knowing who we are, um.
Let me stop just one more second. We're going to have, we're going to give, the council said they would give each of you 10 minutes. 10 minutes per proposal, so, yeah. James, give me a 10 minute. I apologize, I got sidetracked there. There was a guy handing me some papers, so.
You do realize if I speak for 10 minutes, I usually take up an offering?
Yes, that's good. Stacy start talking, so he doesn't.
Anyways, um.
Okay, timer going.
Okay, so, um, David and Stacy Howell, like I mentioned, we've been married, um, almost 24 years, this year, 24 years. We have six children, um, and we have been, um, we relocated to Russellville 10 years ago, um, although my husband is originally from here. Um, it was a place that we always visited and, um, just fell in love with and found an opportunity to move. This is the longest I've ever, um, been able to live in one place, and I am, I'm just in love with Russellville. It's the most generous community I've ever lived in, um, and I have every intention on living the rest of my life here. So, that being said, um, we have been actively involved in the community over the 10 years we've been here. Everything from coaching little league teams, um, in Kiwanis, to, um, I minister out at Saving Grace, which is an amazing rehabilitation, um, for addicts that our county offers. Um, I served as the call director here for, uh, this region for a year. Uh, we also served on the board for Joseph's House, which is a, um, a place for foster families to get support. Uh, and we also served as foster parents here in Pope County. Um, David has been involved in, and still is, in Kiwanis. Um, we've been, uh, able to be part of an initiative at City Church where he is a pastor, and I have served as women pastor for the last four years, um, that designated and gave $50,000 to the Lattimore House Project. We've also been involved in the initiative of, um, paying off, um, over $3 million in bad debt for the entirety of Pope County and along with a couple of other, uh, counties, um, in central Arkansas. So, um, I just say that to say, like, we're invested here. Um, so whether it is in this building physically or whether it's not, like, we're, we're invested here. Um, so what we would do with this building is, first of all, we would want to honor the building and the people who built the building. I think it is really, it says a lot about the people in the community that we, there are so many people who see this building as something they want to preserve. Um, it's beautiful, the stained glass windows, the rafters, um, and just the fact that it, it was built to, um, as a church, to honor God in the middle of our town. Um, I would love to be able to preserve as much as possible, um, with that, with the windows and the rafters, um, and just kind of give it an update. Um, I'm not going to read all of this because I know you guys can, and I don't feel the need to do that. I just want to touch on a few things. So, um, we would take the building, we would renovate the outside as in painting it, give it a facelift, give it some vegetation and landscaping. Uh, we would like to create, um, an outdoor space in the, in the grassy area, in the back and on the side, if possible. Um, and, uh, the, the building would be a business that we would call Honey's Hive. Um, hive as in there's so many different things going on and, um, all at the same time in this place. We want it to be like a community space. Um, I have a vision for art, um, specifically geared towards children, but not only children. So art as in not, here's how you draw a tree, or here's how you paint with a paintbrush, but from the concept of what does it look like, or how do you teach someone not to paint something, but how to see something and to come up with their own vision for something? What would it be like to take a group of kids out and we're going to, you know, study trees and we're going to paint something about trees, but instead of showing you how to do that, let's go outside and look at trees? What would a tree look like from a bird's point of view, from underneath it, from the side? And allowing the kids to have their own vision and to come up and create, um, their art and then being able to look at what their classmates, um, also created and to see the differences and appreciate the different perspectives that we all carry as individuals. Um, I would also like to offer, um, photography classes. So I'm actually an entrepreneur, is just kind of who I am. Um, I've had two different businesses before we moved to Russellville, um, when our twins came along into our life. Shortly after we moved here, I, I have kind of shut that down. Um, I was a professional wedding photographer, taught photography, I've had pictures published in multiple magazines and public, uh, publishings, including British Vogue. Um, and I, I would like to offer photography classes, uh, for kids, for teens, um, and for adults, um, for people who are aspiring and think maybe that's something they would want to even pursue as a career and to be able to offer, like, community, um, for that as well. Um, so there's that. Um, the first business I ever created was a sewing business. I grew up watching my grandmother sew and, um, a new mom of two, um, eight, how old is it? About 18 years, 20 years ago, um, I kind of took that back up and created a business that made custom baby bedding for people. That was a really big thing back then. Um, and grew that into something very large where I was inviting people in and they were creating brochures, hence the photographer coming in and doing that. Thought that looked like a lot more fun with a lot less work, um, and a lot less on your dining room table all the time. And so that's how I ended up switching from that into the photography. Um, so I would like to offer all of that, um, in this space, including, um, being able to have, like, um, one-on-one classes, um, or like mom and me classes for, uh, kids, um, who are neurodivergent. I am neurodivergent myself, and I have several kids who are not neurodivergent. Uh, we have six children, ages 22 to nine, and five of the six are neurodivergent. And so I, I see, um, what they bring to the table, how they think outside the box. Um, and I want to be able to, um, feed into that and to be able to see them come alive and to build confidence in them, um, and instead of shutting it down, I want to, like, build that up. Um, I would like to be able to offer that, something for, for that classification of kids in our, in our community. Um, so we have the art studio concept, right? But, um, I also want to include, um, we'll have like a, uh, I have this vision, it's already in my mind. Um, so I want to create sculptures made out of books that wind down from the rafters to the floor. I want it to be artsy. I want it to be eclectic. But I also want it to be, like, kid-friendly, but it doesn't look kid-friendly. So we might have, like, tubes on the wall that suck up the scarves, like, to have the Discovery Museum and shoot them down the wall to a basket or something. Um, but then at the same time, we'll have, like, cool, um, art sculptures and, um, we'll have a section of books. We'll have, um, like a shelf where kids can come in and for a dollar, they can switch out a used book. Um, we'll have, uh, we're going to have, we want to have a coffee bar. Um, one of our daughters has been working at a coffee shop all through college. She's a senior this year. She's getting ready to graduate with her early, um, or with her elementary education, art teacher education degree, along with a fine arts degree. So we would like to be able to have that, where parents have something to do, and other people have places to gather. And then, um, and offer like a little gift store slash, you know, bookstore. We'd like to have some old vintage books, like, that are collectors, you know, where people can come in and kind of look through those. And then in the outside space, we would like to create, um, um, like a patio seating space, uh, some really cool, like, artsy, eclectic places to, like, sit and relax and read. And then the other thing, um, I have, uh, twins that are 10, um, well, all of our kids really are kind of artsy. Um, and so they've been involved in community theater since, I mean, they were old enough to read a script. I had my twins just auditioned for The Sound of Music yesterday for the summer musical, um, that Center Stage and Dance Foundation are putting on. Um, I would like to offer, um, to put in a small platform stage outside where we could have a kids-run theater club. It's adult-led, but kid-run, where they could create and sew their own costumes, where they could, um, you know, like, design the sets and, and everything, where they kind of get to learn how to work together with teamwork, um, but also be able to put on a show for their friends and family. Um, and the arts classes I want to do at the end of the semester, like, gallery shows, like, I've gone to my daughter's gallery shows at the, at Tech, and they're so cool, just being able to just go in and just honor and then get to kind of show off their stuff. So. Was that the time?
I think it's 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard.
Got 30 seconds.
Okay, yeah. Yes, so, look, the, the Lawrence Act, whether we like it or not, it's here, right? Um, and so I don't know if you guys know, but, um, so you can get on a vendor list. I plan to get on the vendor list. So, um, having a kid who went to RBA this year, uh, we had, even after paying tuition, we had $700 left. Well, what do you do with that excess? You can't spend it on just anything. You can spend it on anything, um, that is sold by a vendor on that list. So anybody who has a school voucher, who has funds left to use, could, would be able to use it for art classes, photography classes, um, books in the bookstore, and any other services that we offer. I've talked to other, uh, teachers who are pulling out to do microschools and, um, so working with them to kind of utilize that and, um, yeah, I think the rest is, I'll let you guys just.
Thank you so much, Ms. Howell. All right.
Are there any questions or?
No questions. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Mike Miller. One thing I do want to preface before Mr. Miller gets to the stage, or getting to the stage, sorry, get up there. Uh, Mr. Miller may, uh, speak of a, a property that he talks about on West Main. We have talked about a property that we have asked Mr. Miller and his, uh, partner Sid Brain to possibly, uh, donate to the city of Russellville, possibly in a swap for a pocket park, which would be on West Main, which would be right off of our trail system, our Russellville Connected Trail System. It is right next to, uh, the old Hardee's location, the Patriot Real Estate and the Bullock Law Firm. It, uh, is behind Dwight School and he may mention that in his, uh, presentation and I just wanted to kind of get that out. Mr. Miller.
If one of these young people would help me, please.
Oh, you need, you need somebody to, uh, hand that out, thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am.
If you give one of those to each and then come back, I've got something else. The, uh, just a minute. As long as I've lived in Russellville, best I remember, this is the first council meeting I've been to. Uh, but I appreciate you hearing me this evening. Uh, the thing I would propose to you is, uh, a, a property swap and to create a, uh, community theater in the old, uh, Boulder Avenue Christian Church. And, uh, let's see, here you go. Oh, let me have one of those, please. Let me get right into the meat of the subject. In order for this swap to happen, first thing we would do, we would create a 501(c)(3), uh, (c)(3), uh, to own and operate a community theater here in town. And, uh, that theater would be located in the, uh, the church property that you have. In order to do that, I would have to establish a, a board of directors, uh, that would, uh, manage the property. Uh, I would, uh, donate, transfer that West Main property to the Russellville Community Theater, that is, is the way I refer to it, RCT. And I would also guarantee that I would, uh, secure the financing to renovate the old church. Now, uh, you, you would have some responsibility also. Number one, uh, you would create a park on the West Main property. Uh, I would probably like to retain naming rights for that park. Uh, you know, I, one of the conditions is that you create a park. Uh, you know, it's a, it, it's a expensive piece of property and I don't want you to, uh, do this swap and then sell it at some future date. And if that was something that you were going to do, uh, I would need some consideration.
It would be for a park.
I'm sorry?
It would be for a park, sir.
For a park. Uh, the, the church property back here is my understanding that the little white building that is west of the church is termite eaten and y- your plans are to demolish it and that would be a condition of this property swap. Uh, that you will conduct or construct, uh, additional parking there. I would require that you, uh, construct ADA compliant sidewalks, uh, for access to the church from the parking lot. And, uh, hopefully we could, uh, agree on when that was done in the new parking, some public area, maybe a little patio and some seating and some benches. Uh, one thing I would request is, uh, that you dispose of any asbestos that may be, uh, come known in that church building. Uh, in the reviews that we have done so far, we have detected no asbestos in that area. So I'm, I know that the white building, there is asbestos there and I know that you're going to have to deal with it. So, uh, if there's a, any asbestos we need to dispose of, uh, I would ask that you would do that at the time that, uh, uh, you take care of the asbestos in your own building. One of the requirements I ask is that you replace the roof, the gutters, the downspouts. Uh, and we would like to have some approval, uh, you know, as far as colors and, uh, another issue, I would ask that you would replace the HVAC in the building. And I picked out the roof and the HVAC because they're easily separated and easy to identify. Uh, and, uh, after we, uh, established the 501(c)(3), they would facilitate the swap with the city. Uh, I would have no ownership. Uh, it would be controlled by, uh, by a, uh, board that, uh, operated the, the, uh, community theater. Uh, I, I would see the community theater, uh, being a venue for community youth, uh, possibly have some acting instruction there. And, uh, I would anticipate we would have regular, uh, children's productions there as well as adult productions. And I would anticipate we would have three to four of those per year. And, but the actual swap would take place between, not me, but between the 501(c)(3) that I gift the property to and the city. Okay, that's, that's bottom line in a nutshell and I would entertain any questions.
So you want the park next to the community theater?
No, the, the park is on West Main. The, the park is on the, the property that is on West Main.
I provided you, I provided you an appraisal.
Yep, with the, um.
Of a piece of property. Now, that's a two thousand and eighteen appraisal. Uh, we would update that, uh, should, should we agree in principle about thi- this issue.
It is a property on West Main, right next to Bullock Law Firm. Mr. Bradley, you may know that.
The, uh, you note, uh, the piece of property that I have is appraised for considerably more than your piece of property is worth, is why I asked for some concessions. And, uh, if you think that is not enough, I'd be happy for you to make a donation for the renovations.
Any other questions?
And I don't expect an answer from you tonight, but, uh, I would like to hear back from you, uh, in the near future so I can, uh, know how to react to this.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Thank you for coming out. Alright, uh, Mr. Pistone, you have your group, however you want to do that, you would have ten minutes between, uh, however many people you choose to allow to speak on your behalf.
They can all speak as they would like to, I don't think anybody else wants to.
Yeah, exactly. They're only going to, Ms. McGuire, what are you here to speak of on?
I'm here to speak.
Oh, it's in attendance, okay, that's in attendance. I thought that said, I thought that said speak and I was like, okay, I'm, I apologize.
However, McGuire, do you know if any time you would like to speak?
I'm good. We're all grateful, so thank you. So, Mr. Pistone.
I'm John J. Pistone, I represent Russellville Playhouse. We have our board, most of our board of directors are here with us and some other people have shown up to show their support as well, which I'm so thankful for and grateful for. Um, we're all grateful for it. Do I need to make the same presentation that I already made to the city council?
You have ten minutes, is however, whatever you want to speak, you have ten minutes to speak, however, whatever you choose.
Okay, so obviously again, our proposal is to turn the, the church and the annexed building into a community theater, uh, that is overseen by the Russellville, uh, the city of Russellville. Um, my role, let's back up. So Bold Theater, I have a theater company from California, I operated a theater for the past five years, I've been involved in theater for fifty years. I was in my first play in Clarksville, Arkansas, uh, at the elementary school there and I've been involved in it ever since. I've been a full-time actor since two thousand and ten. Um, prior to that, I served in the military, so, and I was telling stories in the military that was my job there. So, um, my Bold Theater has an agreement with the Russellville Playhouse to manage and operate the theater until they receive their 501(c)(3) designation. We've got the art, you know, and we've applied as a corporation and applying for the 501(c)(3), but that takes time. Their job of Bold is only to manage the operations and help fundraise because a lot of grants and donations can't, you can't get it unless you've been around for two years. So they've partnered with Bold, with my other theater company, uh, for this project specifically to fundraise and to manage the thing. We're not in any way going to be doing any of the programming. The program we did at Bold Theater was very niche, um, specific to the LA market. We were trying to get people to go to theater who normally don't go to theater. The types of programming that we're mandating with the Russellville Playhouse, family-friendly shows. One of the first shows we're doing this summer is Peter Pan, a retelling of Peter Pan, uh, we're looking at the Addams Family, so all of our shows are family-friendly. Also, the, the whole structure of this, the city, this is a part, we want a partnership with the city is what we want. So the city would have oversight into the programming that goes on and the operations of the theater. Um, so yeah, so that's our goal. We've, we've done a lot of legwork, we've already, um, assessed the buildings, we're getting, we've got some quotes on what it would cost to renovate, um, and tear down and to build a new, new building. We've shown that at the other previous city council meetings, so I don't really know if I need to go through that again. Um, I think the real question is, is why us, and I'm going to go through the slideshow now if we can. Um, let me see, this is it up? There we go. I'm not quite sure how to, I'm not as familiar with this aspect of it. Um, so yeah, so the idea is obviously, you know, building a cultural relevancy and a legacy here in Russellville, right? You, you were at a great time to do this. I mean, I think we've agreed, there's another group here and the, the other lady that spoke. Russellville wants community theater. Um, as a matter of fact, I pulled up, right before I came, we, we started a Facebook page twenty-eight days ago. And in the past twenty-eight days, we have had eleven thousand people visit our Facebook page. That's thirty-six percent of the population of Russellville. So there's clearly a desire and a need for community theater in Russellville. We did a video encouraging people to come out and support this that we aired, um, we put up last week and within a week, we got eighteen hundred views. So that tells, that tells me there's a definite interest and a need for community theater here. So, um, that's what we want to do. So you guys have a pr- proven track record of investing in the arts and in the community, which I think is important, ties into what we're looking to do. Um, the economic impact on the city for every dollar spent at community theater usually translates to four to six dollars spent in the community. One of the reasons why we think you should partner and work with us is this, again, this is, this brings revenue to the city, it's a, a city service that you can provide. Uh, all we're looking to do is manage it. Um, reason why you'd want to partner with a public asset rather than a business, you have oversight, you have control. The buildings remain the property of, of the city of Russellville. If we build a new building, it's, it's all the city of Russellville. Um, we have a steady influx of patrons, we're not profit-driven, we're a nonprofit. Um, so a hundred percent of it goes back into this, to the profit share that we have with the city and into the operations of it. Um, I'll go on to the next one. Obviously, this is what a, a community theater does. You have higher community engagement, stronger educational outcomes, it's proven that children that are exposed to the arts at an early age do better in school all the way around. When you have arts and entertainment in your community, crime rates are lower because there are things for people to do after school, more, more opportunities for them to do things and not be bored and get into trouble. And also, obviously, it supports the local businesses. You know, with the community theater here, you've got Point Remove, you've got the coffee shop, the Dog Ears Books, you've got, you know, the restaurants that are all down here that if they're coming to theater, they're going to go to those things. When you go to a theater, you're going to spend money on gas, you're going to spend money on, on food, you want to go have dinner. Um, trying to watch our time here. Again, the other benefit of partnering with us is that you maintain control overall, right? The city controls the communities, the, the, the Playhouse, we're just the, the management people that do it. Which of course, one of the other things that we, we put into our bylaws is that an artistic director is only allowed to be the artistic director for three years. The reason for that is we want other people to see that there's an opportunity for them if, for growth, that everybody has an opportunity to participate. It's not about one person or one group or any, you, this is a community theater where if you want to be involved in storytelling, you're going to have a chance to do that. Uh, so those are some of the benefits of aligning with us. Also, it's going to help position Arkansas as a leader in the arts, you know? People say this is Center for the Arts, they, they need places to go, so that's also what this does for you. There are success stories here in Arkansas of other theaters, community theaters that have thrived and been successful. We did the math on just our, our potential outreach. We have a goal of doing five shows a year. It's a pretty aggressive goal, five to six is pretty aggressive for a theater. If we can reach just the amount of people, the percentage of people that responded to our video in a mo- in a week, which is six percent, that brings in thirty, if, if we get six percent of Russellville's population to come to the community theater and watch one show, one show a year, that's thirty-six thousand dollars in revenue, of which the city profit shares it. We're hoping we get more of that. So yeah, so this is, you know, defining moment, what we consider defining moment for Russellville's future, you know, a partnership, we're, we're willing to absorb the, the renovation costs. We believe we have a pretty aggressive marketing plan and, um, we believe that we can raise the funds to do it through grants and private donors and corporations and sponsorships. Um, we've got a full detailed plan ready to go. We just need the home to do it, which is why we're here. Does anybody else want to say anything? Sure, come on up. Introduce yourself. So that's what I've got, that's, that's where I am with it.
Hi, I'm Cheryl and I have a small proprietorship here in Russellville. I'm also from California, like my friend over here, and I'm just here to support him. I just found out that, uh, we were going to have a theater on Facebook and in the newspaper. So I encourage all of you to support this community theater and it brings families together, children together, and I just want to make a plug for our church. Uh, we're doing a production at, uh, Russellville First Assembly, he's alive, please come out. Thank you very much.
Um, I've got a minute. Um, is there anything else that you guys want to know from me? Because we've been here a couple times.
One of the things that, since our first conversation, are you wanting to keep the annexed building or tear it down?
We're still trying to determine which is more cost-effective.
Okay.
Ideally, I thi- in my dream, I showed you guys some pictures of what we would, would like, we would like to tear it down and rebuild. It might not be cost-effective. We've got a rough cost to do that from somebody that came in, or very, very rough, at about, it's in between five and seven hundred thousand dollars to rebuild. Uh, we don't know what renovation costs are yet, they're supposed to get that to us.
Mr. Smith, my question to you, and maybe you can or can't answer this, the city's responsibility now that we know of the existing asbestos in a city-owned property, for us to open that back up to the public, what is the, I mean, the, I don't even know how to ask that.
Well, we're going to have to remediate the asbestos in some way if we're going to, it's going to be taken into consideration if it's a sale or a lease or is open to the public, if, if, if there has been a, an asbestos study on it.
So if we, if we were to enter into some type of partnership and the building stayed as is and was renovated, then we would have to remediate whatever asbestos was in that property before we could even begin to think about opening that up to the public. And we do know at this point in time, it's a sev- I think I did get a bid for seventy-eight thousand dollars to tear it down due to the asbestos content, so, okay.
Yeah.
I just, I did, that was a question since our first.
We would prefer to, we would prefer to tear it down and build a new facility that matches, that looks great with the city and stuff like that. I think, one of the, the last things that I'll say before I get off is that, you know, you guys have seen me a couple times, I've talked with most of you, almost all of you. Um, I have been looking to move back to Russellville, I grew up here, uh, and do this kind of thing for years, um, the opportunities arisen, um, is I think that, for us, again, it's, it's committing to, to providing something for the city that I think the city desperately needs.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms., for, before Mr. Pistone sits?
Well, you just mentioned, do we, that's teardown cost, is that, have we gotten a firm bid on that?
That was a bid, that was a bid for remediation. Uh, our local waste, uh, our local dump will not take it, I think it has to be transported to, uh, Mina. I think it has to be transported to Mina because that's the closest place that we'll take it. Someone else, smart amendment. But that, that is an actual bid for $78,000 to tear it down. And EEG, a local environmental company was included in that process. Now, we would, before we did that, we would take more bids, just to let you know, we would have to take more bids, but...
Yeah, the only other thing that I was trying to say is, real quick, is that we're, we're ready to go. We've done all the legwork. We've done all the steps that, that, all we're looking for is a home.
You're ready to go, except, what, what's your anticipated time on fundraising?
Depends on which way we go with it, but realistically, anywhere from seven to 12 months and then building...
And how much money are you anticipating raising in seven, 12 months?
$750,000 is what we're shooting for, and hopefully we'll come in under that, in terms of the cost will be under that.
So you're anticipating raising $100,000 a month is what, yes?
That's our goal, yes, sir.
It's a little bit of editorializing there, but, hmm, this feels a little editorializing there, like we can just hear his proposal, can't we?
No, I know, I was just, no, I was, I was asking what is anticipating, I apologize, but I mean, I was asking what he was, what he was anticipating his fundraising would be.
So is your, in your proposal, is it to lease the building from the city? The city retains ownership, you would then like enter in a lease?
Yeah, whatever standard leases, like a dollar lease or something like that, that the city, city does or tend, whatever it is that has, I know the city has to charge something.
He's not looking at leasing it for any, he, he wants a partnership to where he's not leasing it for any substantial dollar amount. It's going to be a partnership.
Right, we're also, again, the, the city's going to make money, a percentage of the ticket sales obviously goes back to the city. So you retain the building, we create a community center, and the city can also generate income from it.
I was just conferring with the city attorney and there's, seems to be some, some questions on the legality of being able to actually like, to enter into a partnership on that and then derive, the city derive income from it, would then be like, okay, so, if the, if the theater made $50,000 and the city got, got half, you know, under that, it was like, well, if the, if the theater lost $50,000, then the city as a partner would be in, you know, on the hook for half. So I mean, I think that from a legal standpoint, it would be renting the building in some sort of partnership in that way, but I don't think that we could enter into some sort of agreement where it's like revenue sharing.
We had a partnership, I, I owned a sports company down in San Diego when I got out of the military, and we had a partnership with the city where we provided, we used their facilities and provided pickup sports where the city collected the money and, and gave us a percentage. It was like an, but we basically were renting the facility from them that they normally would charge, they didn't charge us to do it. So I don't know if that's the same kind of thing, that's beyond my knowledge base.
So it'd be something, kind of like some sort of agreement with...
It's a contract for services at that point where you're, we're saying that we want to provide this service to the city.
Oh, there you go.
More like the Boys' Girls Club.
Yeah, so, or the depot or something like that, you would have some type of contract for services for the theater.
The city enters into agreements with organizations all the time. It is something we can do.
Okay.
I understand, we're, we're not going anywhere here needing to hash out details, like your presentations.
Okay, all right. Mr. Keller, would you mind turning on your microphone? I apologize. Thank you, sir.
We good?
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate you.
Mr. Duffield, who will speak on your behalf, or will you partner with Ms., is it Bellagio?
Bellagio.
Bellagio, okay, all right. Would you, when you get to the podium, please state your name for us? Thank you so much. You, and you'll have 10 minutes to speak, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Jill Bellagia. I'm currently the owner of JB Wellness and have been since 2018, 2019. Was located in the little building on El Paso that is going down for the Prairie Creek project. So about a year ago, moved into a location on East Harold Drive in the strip mall that's over there. Was seeing clients in the small building, one-on-one yoga therapy, and have expanded now to offer wellness classes, yoga classes, workshops, sound therapy, craniosacral therapy, all kinds of different wellness aspects. In that space, it's working well, but not quite the atmosphere, the environment of a wellness facility when we're right there by the highway and all the neon. As far as Russellville goes, that's kind of like the Russ Vegas to me, with all those lights and all that stuff. So this space here where the church is located, as far as the environment and the outside space and less traffic and the quiet, is much more conducive to a wellness business and would have, I think, an opportunity with our downtown employees and with the innovation hub and bowl time and everything there to give an opportunity for people who are working to have a little bit of lunch, come over, do a little quick 25-minute stretch after sitting in desks all day. We'd be able to offer opportunities for people that can continue the idea of what we've got going with our wellness program. And in this day and age and the stress level that everybody deals with, the idea of even a 15-minute meditation practice during a lunch hour, so that people have a little bit of quiet time compared to just the go-go-go of every day. So that locate, this location here would be more conducive to that than people driving out to where we are now. So that's my initial thought with that process. The annexed building is not something that I would need at all to make that happen, it would just be the church building itself and the grass area around that where we could potentially do some outdoor classes. So we had our Eclipse event downtown in April of last year, and we provided a yoga class every morning of that weekend and offered that to the community members and the people that were coming in from out of town. And can offer so many different aspects of wellness when it comes to nutrition and physical movement and sound therapy that I think our community needs. And the people that have been coming to me for the last five or six years have been very, very happy. And we've got a great little community and I just know, even in the year that I've been in that space, people are busy and schedules are wild. So they're not as consistent as everybody would like to be, but I've had 400 people from our community come in and see me over the last year. So it's, it's good numbers and a better location, more easily accessible, I think, could offer our community a lot of opportunities for growth in that area. And I just found out about this about four hours ago, so I don't have a whole lot more to give you than that. But I've been thinking about the space, we've been talking about it for about the last six to eight months, about how it would be a really neat thing to be able to move forward with that. Any questions?
Mr. Duffield, is there any, I know one of the concerns is, what's the financial, are there any financial considerations from the city's standpoint on if, I'm assuming you're going to be the investor in this property?
Yes, yeah, there's no, no consideration on the city side of that part.
Okay.
Short, sweet, thank you. Appreciate you.
That was fast.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Bellagia?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I, I have one for Mr. Duffield.
Okay.
Would you be interested, you'd be buying just the, the church building, not the annexed building, or are you looking at the whole property?
I would be looking at whatever the city was willing to sell. There was some, I wasn't quite sure on the appraisal if that was including all of it or just the actual church part, so...
We are, we are, we actually are having an updated appraisal right now because we had an appraisal late last, or early last year, so we're having an updated...
Is that going to be coming for us, I'm assuming?
Yes, yeah, you'll get the updated appraisal, yes. We have requested that from Joel Von, Von Appraisals.
We don't, we don't have an appraisal on this building right now though, do we? We have like comps and whatever, we don't have appraisal.
We don't have, yeah, up to date, we know.
So I'll state too, that I mean, the, the, our purpose in this, you know, goes back to probably my time as a senior when there wasn't anything downtown. And, you know, I'm encouraged by just the number of different proposals for any of these structures that's, that's, that's in town and, you know, the transformation that's, that's occurred. This is just one, one idea for the space. The main thing is to preserve it. That, that, that building has, has been here ever since I can remember. So I, anything that will, that will use that space and will uphold architectural integrity of it for the next generations, you know, we would, we would support, so.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, or Mr. Pistone?
Just wanted to clarify, you want to keep the church building, that's exactly, we're all, we're all clear about that.
Yes, 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 yeah, 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 I think we're all clear on that, yeah. Yes, so, now let me ask you this, you're, when you said $500,000, I'm assuming that's like totally knocking down and that's building back new, so we don't have to worry about any remediation of, of asbestos or anything in that number? That, that covers us, so we're not having to worry about what Mr., Mr. Smith was saying. I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we adjourn.